Call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming. We'll call Mr. Lombard.
Paul.
Yes.
Odie, Clumper, Saxer, Schrager.
Yes.
All right, if there are no changes that need to be made to the agenda, I would entertain a motion to approve that as presented tonight, please. So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. No conflict of interest disclosure or waiver requests tonight, which takes us to approval of the minutes from the regular meetings on November 13th and November 26th. If there are no corrections to those, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
Moved or approved meeting minutes?
Second.
Spent a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Community input, I don't believe there is any tonight, takes us to financial items. Mr. Lombard.
Okay, the bills and claims were included in your packet. I noted just a couple on, first on page three, a good portion of the bills this month are debt service payments. You'll see the payment to First National Bank of intermediate school GO bonds and a bond payment for the Valley Springs slash high school slash Valley Springs Elementary Projects that we did a number of years ago and the Robert Bennett Elementary GO bonds and the paying agent fees, a total of $1,654,000 in bond payments. Also, I had noted that on page two, there's a payment to the Brandon Valley Food Service, $262,000. That's all the credit card receipts that have come in for the first five months, July through November. We just deposit those into the general fund and then transfer them over periodically to the, to the Food Service Fund. So those two bills, those two payments right there constitute about 86% of the total of $2,227,000. If anybody had any questions on those, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, we had $5,872 of advanced payments, $33,602 of pay vouchers, mainly substitute teaching, and $97,601 of Food Service Bills.
Any questions for Mr. Lombard at all tonight on the bills and claims? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please. So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Financial report, Mr. Lombard.
Okay. On the cash report for the month of November, we came into the month with $2.8 million. Received just a little over $6 million and dispersed 3.5 million, which left 5.3 million at the end of November. 3.6 million of that was in the general fund, $51,000 in the pension fund, $625,000 in the bond redemption fund, and $37,000 in the enterprise fund. You'll notice that a lot of the temporary inter-fund transfers are being paid off in the midsection of that cash report. Capital outlay paid back $1,123,000 to the general fund. Still has about $700,000 remaining to pay back on an inter-fund loan. That'll probably be gone in December when the rest of the tax draw from the first half comes in. And the Special Education Fund paid back $255,000, which there's just a small amount of $35,000 left, which will also be taken care of in December. The cash, or the monthly receipts for November of $6 million are itemized there, great majority of it from taxes, property taxes. $1 million investment report, CD at First National Bank. The payroll and benefits report showed $2,356,708 of payroll for the month of November. Of that, $525,000 was our salary enhancement program. That plus the normal payroll of about $1,830,000 came up with the $2,356,000 of payroll this month. They were associated payroll taxes and deductions are there for your review. Financial statements, the revenue portion of the financial statements, 42% of the fiscal year completed. The revenue side is just a little bit shy of the, of last year. Some timing of how the property taxes are coming in, that should catch up in December and be right there. Everything seems to be about 2% lower than it was last year, but like I said, that'll come back into December. Expenditure report, general fund shows 42.43% expended versus 42.34% last year, so it's right on target for same as last year. Capital outlay fund, 67% versus 62%. No problems there. If anybody had any questions, holler at me. Special education fund is a little lower since we're not paying East Dakota Co-op upfront this year. Pension fund is fully expended. Bond redemption fund similar to last year. The Food Service Fund shows a profit of $5,800 versus a loss last year at the same time of $16,000. The trust and agency statement is the last thing, shows $159,000 of amounts that we're holding for others. Any questions on the financial statements or?
Paul, just, just a question. On the general fund capital outlay, when you will borrow kind of back and forth until cash flow allows, is there any interest calc on that? I know it's all BV as an entity, but I just was curious if state requires any interest calculation or anything.
The language in the statute is, what's the word I'm looking for, is permissible language. So you can charge interest if you choose, but based on the fact that, as you just said, that it's internal money, we just really haven't had the need or the desire to charge interest between the funds and, and just pay it off with zero interest. But it is permissible to do if you wanted to, but we never have.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. As you know, we all know with the capital outlay fund, our expenditures are all front-end loaded. We get all those done in the summer, so we have a lot of bills to pay before the revenue comes in, so therefore it runs a little short in the first half. And generally about December it gets cleaned up and gets back to normal. Any other questions?
Hearing no other questions from Mr. Lombard, I would entertain a motion to approve the financial report as presented tonight, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you again, Mr. Lombard.
Thank you.
General business, the first item we have is under administration reports, the Administrative Center Superintendent Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As previously reported, academic calendar for next year is underway. We will plan on having a presentation of the draft calendar here at our first meeting in January and potential action at our second meeting in January. Project Lead the Way, want to make a special note on this. We will be approving the course and course expenditure, the dollar amount that's associated with training staff, et cetera, for next year. It is not new to Brandon Valley students as it is currently a component of what we offer at, or what is offered at the CTE Academy that we buy slots at in Sioux Falls. But I just want to note that, that we are recommending and approving a biomedical science class. It is a CTE or a science class. It will be new onsite for next year, and I tell you it very, very much aligns to our strategic plan and then also BV Vision 2040 in a variety of ways. As previously reported, BV Listens Work Environment Survey for both certified and classified staff is in progress. We will administer that here later this, later this winter. We have a group working on the South Dakota graduation requirements. Our board committee, in addition to our high school administration, our Director of Instruction will be working through a variety of items regarding that, and I would plan for a committee report or some recommendations on that in the near future. We just held our first, or at least the first that I know of, City and School Collaborative Work Session. Certainly appreciate the city council for joining us, and we look forward to future opportunities to collaborate and work together. We will be holding a school and state legislative breakfast meeting for our District 10 and 25 representatives on Wednesday morning, December 12th, at 7:30 a.m. at the Administration Center. I want to note a couple of things regarding the Link's Way. So December is, is we have a focus on our component of the Link's Way, which is safety, or we are safe. And we had the coolest video come to us from an individual. His name is Philip Allison, and he works with Character Counts and the South Dakota Youth Foundation. And anyway, he sends me this email, and you will be receiving the video link in the, in the coming days. But the Reader's Digest version is, our students created a video through, through South Dakota Broadcasting and South Dakota Youth Foundation and Character Counts, which is what Philip works with, on internet safety, and it actually fits really nicely into the month of December for the Link's Way component, we are safe. So we will be hosting a assembly at each one of our elementary intermediate middle schools here in the next couple of weeks regarding internet safety, and the key players and the key messengers in that are some of our very own links. The four individual student athletes that will be accompanying four or five young ladies to the, to the all-school assemblies will be sharing message about internet safety and appropriate online behavior and whatnot. So you'll be getting an email from me later in, later in the month of December regarding that, but it is, is a really, really cool thing, I guess is what I tell you. And it was one of those things that gives a person goosebumps, and undoubtedly will have an impact on all of our youth. So with that, that leads me into January, and I would note, we are kind. So the Tour of Kindness is coming to Brandon Valley, and that will be presented by Justine and Quinn Kogle. Justine is Quinn's mom, and Quinn is a young lady that suffers from, from a genetic disorder, the same genetic disorder that the individual in the book and/or movie Wonder has. So there's some facial, cranial abnormalities, et cetera. Anyway, Justine has developed the Tour of Kindness. So Quinn and Justine will be joining all of our students and staff in the Brandon Valley School District, January 16th through the 18th. And then, in addition to that, our parents will have the opportunity to attend a session put on by Justine and Quinn, and that will be held at halftime of the ballgame that is on, I believe it's on the night of January 17th, if that, if that, if I have that date correctly. I think it's a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Thursday, January 17th is the ballgame. At halftime of the varsity ballgame, there will be an opportunity for parents to come in and listen to Justine and Quinn's message regarding the Tour of Kindness. And building upon that, our staff will be engaging in a random acts of kindness activity at our in-service on January 21st. So Director Nelson works with her staff development team, and as the month of January, our Link's Way focuses on we are kind, we wanted to do something as a staff, or we thought our staff could do something for organizations within our community. Anyway, as, as an administrative council, we sat down and had some conversation on what could we do and how could we do it? And, you know, the topic of letting the staff wear blue jeans and allowing them to offer a free will donation was an idea that, hey, maybe this is how we could help support our Random Acts of Kindness mission. Overall, the story is a giant thank you to our staff that participated. Wednesday, December 5th, we held a Random Acts of Kindness Blue Jean Day. So staff within the Brandon Valley School District could wear blue jeans if they wanted to, and if they wanted to offer a free will donation to help support our Random Acts of Kindness mission for the month of January, they were able to do that. I would tell you on a personal note that I had a state superintendent's meeting, and I wore my blue jeans because I wanted to wear them with our, with our staff, and I had never gotten so many funny looks in my entire life because I am a suit and tie kind of guy, and I think they wondered what was going on when I walked in with the blue jeans on. But a special thank you to our staff, raised over $1,000, and that will go to support our local communities and organizations. A few examples, Brandon area food pantry, Children's Inn was another one that we had talked about, Bethany Meadows. So there's a variety of those types of items, in addition to taping inspirational quotes on water bottles for the upcoming state assessment that our kiddos will take. So that, that type of stuff will be a component of what our staff does on January, January 21st. It's a good, good opportunity to take a breath and set the professional development aside for 20 or 30 minutes and engage in some activity to help the community. So special thank you to our BV staff for, for all of their work. A few upcoming dates on that, on this academic calendar, we get out of school two hours early on the 21st, winter break, 21st through January 1st, 2019. School resumes on the 2nd of January. No school for in-service and workshop on the 11th. In-service on the 21st of January, no school. And then February 15th and 18th, a Friday and a Monday, no school. With that, I would certainly entertain any questions or comments that you have.
The Project Lead the Way, so the CTE Science, Biomedical Science, do you foresee that then being a course potentially at that Valley Springs School in the future for the 2040 Plan?
Yeah, absolutely. Great, great question. I would tell you that that, that course component, that project, for example, has multiple courses. In addition to biomedical science, human systems, human body systems is another course that fits within that CTE scope and within that project specifically. I would tell you that it is, that is absolutely the type of career and technical education programming that we would foresee at an onsite Brandon Valley CTE or STEM Academy, whatever you would want to call it. That is certainly foundational groundwork for bringing some things back, or the start of bringing some things back. Absolutely.
That's fantastic, because I think what we have greater than 30% of students that are showing interest in being involved in that coursework and then ongoing mentorship and internship. So I think that's fantastic that we're bringing that in-house, and then looking that fits not only our 2040 vision, but the strategic plan of the student achievement, as well as getting involved with that parent-community relationship. So I think that's fantastic. So kudos to bringing that forward.
And in full disclosure, Principal Schleckaway is the individual whom has done the heavy lifting and the legwork on Project Lead the Way and bringing that forward. I would tell you that staff buy-in has been really phenomenal at this point in time with the high school, within the high school science curriculum. So there'll be some staffing shifts and whatnot, but good, good stuff. Thank you.
Did you want to do the State of Schools? Any questions for Superintendent Larson on the superintendent's report before he goes into the State of Schools address?
Could I have you kill the lights, Director Henchel, or Mr. Marshall? Thank you. Because there's some charts and it'll be a little easier to see the, to see the screen. First and foremost, I'm going to tell you that this is a very high-level overview of the State Accountability Report Card and specifically the Brandon Valley School District. If you go to the DOE webpage and dig into that, you can find an incredible amount of information, but I want to provide you with a basic overview of, of last year's accountability report card, as all of the information that I'm sharing you is from the 1718 school year. So I think the most important thing for our board and our public to know and understand is that the school, the school academic accountability process is all about impacting student learning, with our ultimate goal being student learning and improved academic performance. So if you think about things as a process, I would tell you that when the report comes out, or we review and analyze our items that are, are reported to us, we report to you, we then deliver that assessment to our kiddos again, we review those, we report them to you, and again, we assess our kiddos. It's very procedural. And when I think about, when I think about school accountability and ultimately data-driven instruction, specifically at the report card level, so we, we take, we take the time to review and reflect on our results, and that's what you guys see specifically in our school improvement plans and models, that plays into our curriculum and instruction planning and design. And then the district conducts informative assessment throughout the year. So you'll hear, like you hear a lot about our Walk to Read Program. So we utilize DIBELS, we utilize teacher, teacher assessment, those informal assessments. The district assessment items is ultimately what provides us our day-to-day information. And then data-driven instruction is occurring on a regular basis within our system. Then in April, we take our state assessment, and the cycle goes all over again. I want to reinforce, our ultimate goal is student learning and improved academic performance. So real quick, high school, school performance index. It contains four, four things. Student achievement, high school completion, college and career readiness, and then ELL progress. And it is important to note that each one of those four bullet points actually have like sub-bullet points in them, if you were to go on the DOE webpage and really dig into the SPI system. But for the sake of understanding, I think for the general public, it's important to know and understand, those are the four things that we are ultimately measured on for our school performance index. Please note that the ELL progress is a new component this year that is the result of the ESAA Act, the federal law that was passed a number of years ago, but that component, the ELL progress component, became a mandatory requirement for states and schools that receive federal funds. So that's new. So that's high school, school performance index overview and how schools are judged. Elementarys and middle schools, and I would note that our intermediate school would be grouped into this group, ultimately, and very likely an elementary school is what the classification would be. Again, student achievement, academic growth, attendance, and ELL progress. So again, those are the four big-ticket items, and then below those items, there are some subcategories. For example, student, student achievement, a 95% participation rate is a requirement for, for the school in order to obtain achievement points. And then when you talk about academic growth, you're talking about multi-year proficiency. And attendance is the number of students that are attending, I believe it's 92% of the time. Was it 92 or 95? Sherry? 92%. Thank you. So it's the number of kids attending 90% of the time. And then ELL progress again is our ELL population that is on track to exit the program within the defined number of years. So that, the ELL progress is brand new. If you would like more information on school performance index and all of the nitty-gritty calculation business, I have a handout that I can provide you for that. I would note, the Brandon Valley SPI scores are demonstrated. I would note that I had an average for the AA high schools, but I do not have averages for the state of South Dakota. And the Department of Education is hoping that they have the ability to run that report shortly after December 17th, because on December 17th is when the formal APAs are presented and approved and whatnot, and that's when the report card is officially formal. So with that, SPI scores within the Brandon Valley School District are noted. I would tell you that all of our schools' SPI scores improved this year. And one item that I would note within the high schools specifically is that that SPI score is the number one ranked SPI score in Class AA. So that would just be an item to note. I will be providing you the state and double A SPI score information at a future superintendent's report, once that report comes available through the Department of Ed. But overall, outstanding performance by, by all of the schools within the Brandon Valley School District. So now, I want to just provide you again, a high-level overview of our school district's performance versus what the state of South Dakota performance is, so that you have the ability to glean truly how wonderfully our children are performing. I would note that this is performance data, so this is the information for the percentage of your students that are proficient or advanced, or have obtained a three or a four on the Smarter Balance Assessment. Because a three is proficient and a four is an advanced, a one is below basic, a two is basic. That's the general verbiage that had been previously used, so I'm just continuing the use of proficient and advanced, and that would be a score of a three or four. So you can see in ELA, approximately 77% of our third grade students were proficient or advanced, in comparison to the state where they were approximately 51.5%. 74% or approximately 74% of our third grade students in math were proficient or advanced, in comparison to 55.3% within the state of South Dakota in the third grade. In fourth grade, 80% or 80.5% proficient or advanced. In ELA, 50% or 50.5% in the state of South Dakota. Fourth grade math, 78.5% proficient or advanced in the Brandon Valley School District, 49.4% in the state of South Dakota. Fifth grade ELA, approximately 72% of the Brandon Valley School District students proficient or advanced, in comparison to the state of approximately 53%. Fifth grade math, 63.15% in comparison to the state's score of 41.39. Sixth grade ELA in math performance, 67.5% Brandon Valley School District's sixth grade students proficient or advanced, 51.75 in the state of South Dakota. Math proficiency at the sixth grade level, approximately 63% of our students proficient or advanced, in comparison to 44.28% in the state of South Dakota. Seventh grade, approximately 74.6% Brandon Valley students proficient or advanced in ELA, in comparison to the state of South Dakota, 55.62%. Seventh grade math, 63.81% of our students are proficient or advanced, in comparison to the state where their number is 48.07. Eighth grade ELA, about 76% of our eighth grade students were proficient or advanced, in comparison to the state, which was approximately 56%. In math, our eighth grade students, approximately 70% were proficient or advanced, in comparison to the state of South Dakota, which was 47.75. And our juniors in the area of ELA, 83.2% in comparison to the state, 67.16%. Our 11th graders in math, 64.28% proficient or advanced. In math, 43.06% of the state is proficient or advanced. In addition, I would share some, just some ACT data with you. I would tell you that, as you can see within the bar graph, the black and the red is the Brandon Valley School District, the yellow is the state of South Dakota, and the blue is the nation. I would draw your attention just over here to the composite, where you can see that our students are point and a half above the state average composite, and well above the national average. We want to move to graduation completion rate. So this is the Brandon Valley High School four-year cohort, which is basically on-time graduation, running a 97% graduation rate in comparison to the state of South Dakota as, as an 84%. And then high school completion, which is completion but beyond that four-year cohort, again, 97% in comparison to the state of South Dakota, which is 91%. And then this is the new, new piece to the school performance index this year, and this is just our district's English language is just our district's English language learner progress, in comparison to the state of South Dakota. Our English language learner progress, 44% of our EL students are on track to exit the EL program as defined within the SPI, and that's all determined by their, their access score. Whereas 33% of the, of the EL population within the state of South Dakota is on track to exit the EL program. So that's a new component to, to the SPI score this year. So, you know, just some final thoughts. I would tell you that it is phenomenal work. We have truly, truly, truly incredibly talented kids. The number-one factor that the school can control in student achievement is the quality of teacher. So this speaks volumes to the quality of work that our teachers are doing and the quality of teachers that we have in the classroom. In addition, leadership matters. I'm telling you that our building-level principals drive student academic achievement through culture, climate, and curriculum and instructional leadership. And then lastly, our parents and community play a vital role in maintaining an expectation for excellence for all of our schools. Be proud, very, very, very proud, but do not be satisfied. I believe that we have room for an opportunity to grow. Someone asked me the other day about comparison to another school, and my comment was, we'll compare ourselves to ourselves. And we will continue to compare ourselves to ourselves, and we'll continue to maintain a growth mindset for improvement. We have the ability and the opportunity to continually improve and evaluate what areas we can improve, and always strive for improvement, and we will continue to do that. And our expectation of excellence will continue as we move forward. Lastly, just want to thank our students, staff, and parents for their time, effort, and commitment. Ladies and gentlemen, if you dig into the numbers, it truly is, it truly is incredible, the quality of work that is being done in your classrooms and in your schools. We should be very, very proud. Not satisfied, but very, very proud. With that, I would certainly entertain any questions or comments that you have at this time?
I would just echo the comments. I think it was said earlier tonight in our joint meeting, but it's countless how many times, I'm sure you've all heard how many residents move to Brandon or bring their children to Brandon to go to school in Brandon, and how many times they say, well, what is it about the school here? And it's absolutely the investment of every single person that pours into and invests in each of the children. So thank you. It's not even enough to say what you all do, but thank you is all that we have for words. So it's everything that every single person does at the Brandon Valley School District, so from the bottom of our hearts for everyone across the community. And it does, I mean, we say it takes a village, but that's very much true. So there's definitely a sense of pride every time these reports come out every year to say, you know, we get to be number one in so many things, you know, to say that you won a football championship, and we have great athletic teams, but to be a school district that continues to see students perform at this level, that's really what we want to see, and it's because of what you all do. So don't take that lightly. It's really what you all do each and every day. Anyone else have any comments? Well, thank you very much Superintendent Larson, and I think Mrs. Saxer said it all. So thank you. I wish, you know, we had infinite amounts of money that we could just, but we don't. So thanks will have to do, and I appreciate everyone who serves up here on this board, and then like Superintendent Larson said earlier, everybody when we met with the city tonight, just the collaboration and collegiality we have in this community. It was interesting, we actually raised hands on who was transplants here, and it was the majority of the people that were sitting around that table were transplants, and only two, I think, that were actually from this area. So speaks volumes. So thank you very much. Mr. Lumberg, anything else tonight? Okay, thank you. Uh, high school, Dr. Talcott? Mr. Schuckaway? Oh, here I go again. Mr. Thorson? Mr. Fracking? Mr. Skibsted? Okay. Mr. Bab? Ms. Foster? Mrs. Hoffcamp? Mr. Horst? Mrs. Palmer? Okay, next time I'll bring chocolate. Ms. Nelson? Mr. Henschel? Mr. Marshall? Mar, Mar, oh my, Marcel?
If you have chocolate, I'll give you a speech.
I have a haul, sorry. I got a cough drop.
I have nothing.
Okay. I tried. No board policy, which I know everybody is upset about. It takes us to general business. Consent items one through four. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented tonight, please? So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Personnel items, there's items one through six. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please?
So moved.
Second. There's a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Three items there, there are information only. There are some building permit applications for your review, a couple thank you notes to you on the Board of Education for some different items. That takes us to formal board reports. Does anyone have a formal board report they would like to share tonight?
I'll just speak, and we had a transportation meeting, December 6th. Just a little brief notes. It really deals with, this year really went well, because I think it has to do with communication, communication, communication. Because as you, in 16, or 2016, we had 200 late bus passes that were purchased. In the year 2017, we were at 35. And this year, we only had 15, 15 late bus pass purchases after the deadline. So that shows you communication within, and how we got the word out really made a heck of a lot of difference. And we also talked about a few purchases that we're looking at, two buses, a mini-bus and a Suburban, and an update on how many kids are being transported, about 2,000 a day, compared to 1,800 two years ago. So it goes up about 100 kids every year. I believe that was it.
Thank you, Ms. Roddy. From Alternative Ed, I will say thank you on behalf of their business manager, Dave. They are very grateful that we are doing our payments a little bit differently this year, so just thank you very much for being willing to work with them as far as our payment structure for the alternative school. Anyone else?
Yeah, just the safety committee met, and I just wanted to, again, thank Mr. Mark Schleckaway for all the work and effort and time and hours and, and his staff. Mark's not the only one on that safety committee, but tons of hours and time, and I know most of us don't have a clue, the effort that's put into that, but the safety of our staff and the safety of our kids remain top priority. So just a ton of effort and thanks, thank you for what you do.
Thank you, everyone, for your reports tonight. I don't want to leave anybody out. All right. Travel report there for your review. Otherwise, that takes us to the end of our scheduled agenda. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn, please? So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. See you next year. Have a Merry Christmas.